Well, good evening and welcome all. Before proceeding, I pay my respects to the Murrimina people as the traditional and original custodians of the land on which we meet, and I acknowledge the continuing connection of the Tasmanian Aboriginal people to the skies, land and waterways. I pay respect to elders past and present. Before we commence with tonight's council meeting, please let us all pause for a quiet moment of reflection and respect. Thank you, councillors, ladies and gentlemen, please be seated. Well, good evening and welcome to the Clarence City Council Meeting on Monday, the 30th of September 2024. This meeting is being broadcast live on YouTube, and what is said in this meeting is not protected by privilege, and there is a link to the agenda papers on council's website. I note that our CEO, Mr Nelson, is on leave, returning on Wednesday. In Mr Nelson's absence, Mrs Claire Shea has been acting CEO, and I thank her for that. Item number two apologies, we have two, councillor Jay Darker and councillor James Walker. Moving on to item number three, declarations of interest of councillors or close associate. Are there any declarations from councillors? There being none, well, before we head into our omnibus items, I would like to take this opportunity to thank the deputy mayor for chairing the last council meeting in my absence. As colleagues are now aware, I was in Canberra at our last meeting, representing the city at the Australia Top Tourism Town Awards, and I'm delighted to report that Richmond was the 2024 bronze winner of the Small Tourism Town Awards. This award recognises Australian towns with a population under 5,000 people and over 1,500 people that offer amazing visitor experiences and are committed to increased visitation to its region. It was an honour to receive the award on behalf of Richmond, and I would like to place to the record my deep appreciation for the amazing work of the Coal River Valley Tourism Association, and in particular, the association's hardworking and dynamic president, Mrs Katrina Williams. This is a significant accolade and a well-deserved honour for the hundreds of locals involved in the thriving Coal River Valley tourism industry. Congratulations and well done. And I'll leave that with you. Miss Shea, thank you very much. Moving now on to item number four, omnibus items, 4.1, confirmation of the minutes, that the minutes of the council meeting held on the 9th of September 2024 have been circulated. Are there any issues arising? There being none, we now move on to 4.2, Mayor's Communications. 4.2.1, I would like to acknowledge the recent passing of former alderman Kay McFarlane. Kay was an alderman from 2005 until 2018, and I had the pleasure of sitting in this chamber and working alongside Kay, as many of us did. Kay was passionate about natural areas and was a strong advocate for Clarence's Tracks and Trails, chairing council's committee for nine of the 13 years that she was a member. Kay was also a member of council's bicycle advisory committee from 2005 until 2014, and represented Clarence on the Cycling South Committee until 2018. She advocated very strongly for the Clarence Mountain Bike Park in the Meereen Range, which is now one of the most popular recreational spaces in Clarence. She also had a strong interest in the area of planning and the preservation of skyline areas. As the convener of the Southern Regional Skyline Group, Kay was a key contributor to the development of the planning guidelines, urban skylines and hill faces. Kay campaigned tirelessly for the preservation of environmental values in our city. She cared deeply for her community and was involved in numerous committees and organisations. Councillor Chong represented me and councillor Kay's funeral on Friday, and I thank her for that. Colleagues, I know, I speak for all of us when I say that Kay will be greatly missed. Before I invite all gathered to stand for a minute's silence in Kay's memory, I would like to call on the deputy mayor to say a few words. Thank you, deputy mayor.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. It's my privilege to stand here tonight and say a few words in honour of a woman that touched many lives in our community. As the mayor has just said, Kay was elected as a Tasmanian Greens representative to the Clarence City Council from 2005 to 2018, and in that time, she served the council with distinction, including as the chair and member of many council committees, and very notably the Tracks and Trails Committee, and her support, as has been mentioned, for the development of the Clarence Mountain Bike Track. Kay was also a member of the Australian Women in Local Government, where she held a number of executive positions. She also participated in many Tasmanian Greens and Australian Greens committees, and she served as the party state convener. I was fortunate enough to get to know Kay quite well when our shared passions for protecting skylines in Clarence intersected, and I got to see firsthand the commitment that Kay showed towards causes that mattered to her, and her willingness to be welcoming and to work inclusively with others. And since that time, I had the privilege of enjoying just over two decades of many conversations, many and varied conversations with Kay, that were almost always about issues that were completely related to making the community a better place. And for those of us that knew Kay, I think we'd agree that she was a plucky character that liked to get on with the job, and I found Kay to be a person that was direct and showed determined courage in the face of difficulties. Kay always said what she meant and meant what she said. Kay was most definitely a woman of many talents and was one of those people that carried a strong sense of community with her throughout her life. Kay was undoubtedly a doer that had a zest for life that was infectious. She had a great sense of humour that was always present, even when addressing the most pressing or difficult of situations, and she'd always be there with you to press for action on issues for those most in need, or for the battlers, as Kay often referred to them. In honouring Kay tonight, we say thank you and farewell to a person that contributed a great deal to Clarence and has left footprints of love and kindness in our community. In recognition of Kay's New Zealand heritage, I say Kia ora i hua, meaning simply, goodbye, my friend. So, resting peacefully, you'll be sadly missed.
Thank you, deputy mayor. Colleagues, ladies and gentlemen, on behalf of Clarence City Council, I'd like to express our condolences to Kay's family, and I invite all to please stand. Thank you, please be seated. Moving now on to 4.2.2, the Mayor's Diary Entries. My diary entries from the 10th of September through to today, the 30th of September 2024, have been circulated, and also, I'd like to thank the deputy mayor and councillor Chong for representing me as well at the events listed. I'd now like to move on to 4.3, council workshops, as listed in the agenda. 4.4, tabling petitions. Acting CEO, are there any petitions?
Oh, thank you, Mayor, there are no petitions.
Thank you, acting CEO. Moving on to 4.5, reports from outside bodies. I note that councillor Walker's not here tonight for the copying report. Councillor, anything to report for Tas Waste South? Thank you. Moving on to Tas Water Corporation, I can report that as a member of the Tas Water Board Selection Committee, that we have appointed a new chair to replace the retiring chair, Dr Stephen Gummley AO, who has served in that role since 2018. Now, as the new chair will be formally announced tomorrow, there's not a great deal more I can say at this stage. Apart from the observation that the board selection committee was impressed with a very high calibre of applicants, and I have every confidence that Dr Gummley's successor is the perfect choice to lead Tas Water in the next phase of its journey to unlock Water's full potential for a thriving Tasmania. Moving on to the Greater Harbour Committee, our next meeting has just been confirmed today for Wednesday, the 30th of November, and I'll provide an update following that meeting. Colleagues, are there any other reports from council and special committees, other representative bodies? Councillor Chong.
And I table the minutes of the Rhythm Advisory Committee for August. I'm just mentioning the Kialstrang, the Huiturk, the Huiturk. Heidi Towns people came out on the 20th of September. No idea how it went, we spent a long time walking around with them. We'll know in November.
Wonderful, well, good luck. Councillor Hunter.
Yes, thank you, Miss Mayor. I would like to table the minutes from the Australian Coastal Council's Association meeting, held on Monday, September 9th, and the Clarence Council Sustainability Advisory Committee, which met on the 27th of May.
Thank you, Councillor Hunter. Are there any other reports? Councillor James.
A question, Mr Mayor. Is it possible the chair of the Active Living Advisory Committee provides some advice as to whether the minutes of that committee will be presented to council, and will those minutes include the Tracks and Trails Working Group?
Thank you. Are you in a position to answer that, deputy mayor?
Yes, I can. Councillor James, this was a matter that was addressed at our last council meeting, and from recollection, the advice was that those working, the minutes from working committees will be fed up to the overarching committees. We are yet to have our next meeting to consider any minutes that you may wish to send up to us, but when they do arrive and we have mesh, then a position on those will be taken and you advised accordingly.
Thank you, deputy mayor. Thank you, councillor James. There being no other items, I'll move now to 4.6, weekly briefing reports. The weekly briefing reports of the 9th, 16th and the 23rd of September 2024 have been circulated to councillors. Are there any matters arising? Councillor James.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. Firstly, the weekly briefing report of the 9th of September, and that is in a section upgrade of Begonia Street and Malala Road, Lindisbarn. On page five, it says, and I don't need to go into too much detail, but planned works are to commence in the week beginning the 16th of September, where the permitting. And it'll take eight weeks to complete. So my question is, once these works are completed, does it signal the work or attendant to be let on the ceiling of the gravel section and associated works of the Begonia Street gravel road upgrade?
Thank you, councillor James. Mr Graham.
Through you, Mr Mayor. I have advised previously that we are completing the tender documents for the ceiling of that, and when they are released out for tender, we will advise council.
Thank you, Mr Graham. Do you have any other motives, councillor James?
Yes, one more, thank you. It's on the 23rd of September, the ceiling of School Road Sanford. I did raise this matter on the 9th of September, and I thank the acting head of infrastructure at the time for that report. My question is, and as a result of the refusal of the 14-lot subdivision on 1089 South Arm Road, and given that it's unlikely, as it says here, the four-lot subdivision would include a condition for the payment of headworks charges, do we anticipate that ceiling of School Road will be a long time coming? So, I just need to have some indication as to whether or not we are sort of blowing in the wind here with this road reconstruction, and is there any sort of light at the end of the tunnel that this will happen within the term of this council?
Mr Graham, you in a position to provide an answer, please?
Through, Mr Mayor. I mean, as it mentions, the four councils has also been assessing a four-lot subdivision, which includes an upgrade to the end of the section of School Road. I would suggest at this stage, we at least let that proceed and see the outcome of that one before we decide the next stage of School Road ceiling.
Thank you, Mr Graham. Are there any other items arising from the weekly briefing reports? With there being none, I note that we're at the end of our omnibus items. Can I please have a mover? Thank you, councillor Kennedy, second, and councillor Chong. All those in favour? That's unanimous, thank you very much. Moving now to item number five, public question time, 5.1, public questions on notice. This evening, we have two from Mr Walker and one from Mr and Mrs Marsh. Acting CEO, please.
There are three questions on notice tonight, first two being from Mr Bradley Walker of Harra. The first question is, with council recently posting a social media post about invasive weed, bone seed, within the Clarence region, what actions are the council taking to enforce current hygiene and weed management plans on sites 473/525 Ropeby Road and 38 Buckingham Drive, Harra? All with extensive infestation of bone seeds and all with no signs or evidence of any implementation of their HWMP, since council granted the permits for development applications? The answer is, the social media post regarding the declared weed, bone seed, was to raise community awareness of the issue within Clarence. The mentioned properties are covered by separate planning permits that include a condition requiring that a weed management plan be submitted to and approved prior to commencement of works. In relation to 38 Buckingham Drive, council has not yet received any notification of start works noticed as stage one, and to this occurs, council has no power under the permit condition to enforce a weed and hygiene management plan. In relation to 474 and 525 Ropeby Road, weed and hygiene management plans have been received and implemented. For future stages of this development, additional weed and hygiene management plans will need to be approved prior to the commencement of works. The presence of bone seed on the future stages and balanced land of their properties is covered by the Biosafety Act 2019 and associated regulations, with a management objective for bone seed being containment. In relation to privately owned land, council has limited power to enforce containment of bone seed. Council does not undertake routine compliance on private land for low priority declared weeds such as bone seed, as there are higher priorities within our Clarence Weed Strategy 2016 to 2030. The second question for Mr Walker is, in March 2001, I wrote to council with requests for information on permit conditions for SD-2010/44, as the developers were working outside of the planned area of the development. By doing so, they were using council-owned public open space land, 21 Raleigh Court and 23 Raleigh Court, Harra and Raleigh Court for such works, including moving of machinery between all sites. There was extensive removal of vegetation, not part of the permit conditions, and major soil disturbance, including removal of soil from the site. Since these unapproved activities have occurred, there is now an extreme outbreak of invasive weeds in all sites on and near these works, including council public open space. What has the council done between March 2021 till present to rectify the actions of this developer? The answer is, as briefly communicated to Mr Walker in 2021, this area of land is covered by permit SD-2010/44. It is our understanding the works Mr Walker refers to were pipe works undertaken by a developer on their balanced land as supporting works to the adjoining stages on their subdivision. These works were undertaken in accordance with an approved weed and hygiene management plan for those stages of the development, particularly in regard to hygiene monitoring and management. The third question is from Mr Victor and Mrs Joanne Marsh of Bella Reve, and the question is, considering the level of public interest in the results of the geotech and ecological assessments at Rosney's Park lands, what a chance has a Clarence City Council made to obtain this information? The answer is, as advised at previous council meetings, council officers have approached estate for this information on several occasions. At this point, no information has been forthcoming. Once information has been received, council will update the community.
Thank you, Miss Shea. I note that there's no questions without notice this evening, and nor are there any deputations, is that right?
That's correct.
Thank you. Moving now, colleagues, on to item number seven, planning authority matters. I advise that council now intends to act as a planning authority under the Land Use Planning and Approvals Act 1993. Moving now on to item 7.1, planning application for 14 Henry Street, Richmond, additions and alterations to dwelling and new outbuildings. I'll call for a mover, please. Councillor Mulder, second. Councillor James? Thank you. Councillor Mulder.
Mayor, we note that this is for a refusal, and the refusal are based on the planning grounds. I take no exception to them, because the planning scheme is the planning scheme, but there have been similar things where we have come to an alternative view and successfully moved forward. This is a heritage town. It won the Bronze Tourism Council Award, the Bronze Tourism Council Award, that's not because it's in a bronze council, but because it came third in the tourism wars. Yet this town, as councillor Chong will tell us, has a really highly active community groups that are passionate about the heritage of this Georgian town. Yet here we have something that hasn't got a single representation on the issue. Clearly, the people do not think that this would be damaging to the heritage overlay or the planning scheme. In fact, the garage doesn't sit on the front fence, but intrudes significantly inside the But it's not unusual in these Georgian towns to have a front door actually on the street. There is no front set back, that was the nature of Georgian townships, or many of them, and that's the case in here. In fact, if you have a look at sheet number two, photo number two on attachment three, you will see that there is a building called the Corner Cottage, which has actually built on the boundary of two streets, Bathurst Street and Henry Street. So how can we say that a garage set back several metres from Henry Street has no precedent in the area when there is an entire house with a frontage on two streets, which is why it's called the Corner Cottage? Those things aside, without any representations, there is no point in suggesting that we would make an alternative motion, as we have done with many other things, with many other similar developments throughout the city. And the reason I haven't put one is, the walls on that garage, even though set back, are solid, unlike the open ones, which we have previously approved for carports, neither has the developer asked or suggested that we move an alternative. Which leads me to the question is, was the developer advised of the issues surrounding this thing? Was he advised that maybe they should change the development? And if so, what were the outcomes? What were their responses? Or have we just simply rolled them up to the council meeting, given them no notice, and then told them they can't do it?
Councillor James.
Sorry, that was a question, isn't it?
It was a question. I wasn't quite sure what you were doing there, councillor Mulder.
That was, I would finish with a question.
Yeah, councillor Mulder, thanks for my take. Take your seat. Mr Murray, in a position to provide an answer to that question?
Through you, Mayor. Thank you, councillor, for that question. The answer is yes. When the assessment was done, the applicants were advised that we were looking upon it unfavorably, provided an opportunity to reconsider whether or not they wished to make any changes, and they decided not to. That's something we will generally do with all refusals. In this case, we've now put the matter to council, because we don't have delegation for a refusal and for council's consideration.
Thank you, Mr Murray. Councillor Mulder, if you'd like to ask, are you happy to move on? Thank you. Councillor James, thank you.
Thank you, Mr Mayor, and I may or say from the outset that I think we value dearly any development, particularly within the historic or in the heritage residential precinct of Richmond is of utmost significance, and in this particular case, the officers have gone through and followed through in the performance criteria and then done their assessment according with the planning scheme. And it is interesting that there's been no representations, because in the past, and I don't want to dwell on that, as my colleague referred to other applications previously in his presentation, but the simple fact of the matter is that this one stands out, and it stands out because it has been identified as something that doesn't really blend or within the streetscape elements, or in the listed characteristics of those other buildings in the area. So having said that, the officer's recommendation goes into, and it does address, those particular parts or sections of the planning scheme, and I might just make that comment, that is in A1, the proposal does not comply with clause 8.4.2P2, as proposed carport is not compatible with the existing front setbacks of carports and garages within Henry Street. And also, the proposal does not comply with those performance criteria of the scheme, as the siding of the carport is incompatible nor sympathetic to the character of the heritage significance of the Richmond township precinct. I seek council support.
Thank you, councillor James. Any other... Any other colleagues wishing to speak on this one? councillor Hume, thank you.
Thank you, mayor. I just wanted to reflect on councillor Mulder's comments about similar developments that have been recommended for refusal, and which, yeah, council has chosen to overturn that decision and take a different view, where there have been no representations. I think it's important to point out a difference with this development. One of the things that I've argued in the case of a couple of developments, where there was an issue in terms of the performance criteria, and in a couple of cases, I think one was a carport, I think one may have been a shed, there was an issue of the development being incompatible with the setbacks in the streets. And the argument I made in both those cases was that those were streetscapes that were dominated by high fences, therefore, you know, in many cases, the fences were essentially the setback. There was very little visual impact from the buildings that, you know, where they came over the height of the fences. And that is one important difference between, I think, those decisions and this development. Now, while there are no representations, I think we can still come to a view about whether this complies with the planning scheme. And in this case, it's also maintaining the heritage of the area. As councillor Mulder noted, and the mayor announced at the start of the meeting, Richmond has won a Bronze Tourism Award. It's won that award in large part because of the heritage aspect, you know, the heritage of Richmond, the rich heritage of Richmond is a huge attraction. And part of that attraction, while this particular house is not a heritage house, and something like one-third of houses in Richmond, I understand, are, there is also an importance, when you maintain that heritage appearance, to maintain a streetscape that has those heritage values. And the issue here is that you have a garage that is set further forward on the street than the main residence. That's really not in keeping, and in an area where there's a fairly, you know, open space around the block. You know, the planners have come to a view, and I think rightly, that that really is in keeping with the heritage aspect of the streetscapes of Richmond. And if we're going to preserve what's special about Richmond, and what's going to continue winning those awards, then we do need to preserve those streetscapes.
Thank you councillor Hume. councillor Chong, please.
Very briefly, thank you, Mr Mayor, and I echo some of my colleagues' comments. People come to Richmond because of the heritage values. They don't come because we've got a good sweet shop, or any of those things. Those are ancillary to the fact that people come for the buildings and the river and the bridge, and the churches. Buildings. And having said that, it's therefore really important that we keep the heritage overlay, because that preserves that character of the whole area, and without it, it can be eaten away slowly, until you find that there actually isn't a heritage village any longer. So it's very important, however much we may agree or disagree with the planning scheme, that we do support this refusal here.
Thank you councillor Chong. Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Just very briefly, I'll be supporting the officer's recommendation in this instance. Obviously, we don't like necessarily to refuse, but of course, we must when it's required. And it's important to note that this test fails on not one, but two fronts here. So we're not just talking about, we've made a lot of mention of the streetscape, but also the rear extension is an issue that is not compatible with the local heritage precinct. So there are two hurdles here. So hopefully, if this motion succeeds, hopefully, their proponent will, you know, have a think, go back to the drawing board on some of these issues and reconsider. But unfortunately, it's not something that can be supported at this time.
Thank you, deputy mayor. Any other colleagues wishing to? There have been none. councillor Mulder, one required, please.
And I share everyone's concerns about the preserving of the heritage of Richmond. We might start, if we really want to make it a premier tourist town, about getting Bridge Street and knocking off some of the inappropriate buildings and some of the stuff that's been done there and resign it. We might also think about closing Bridge Street, which has become a rat run from Sorrel to Thingy, and here we are, all up on our high horses, because someone plans to build or wanted to build a garage, three feet or three metres back from the front setage, in a street where there's a two-storey house just up the road with a frontage on two streets, and no setbacks at all. So the keeping of that, the Georgian history and the character is actually street frontages. And people, so in those days, the old postie could go along and put a letter through your front door. That's heritage, that's history, that's character. And how I've got a house that hasn't got one, and I'm not, and my questions aren't about devaluing the heritage, I'm just saying that such a development as this would not distract it. You may note I moved the motion, I intend to fully support the refusal, and the purpose of my questions at the end were to say, was this developer given an opportunity? Because I'm sure with a little bit of tweaking, we could have had everything they want and everything the council wants. And that's the reason I asked the question, to give the staff an opportunity to explain that, yes, they had followed their usual processes, but the person hadn't concerned. And that was the point that I was making. And refusing this does not detract or add to the heritage value of Richmond, because they come to see lolly shops, and they come to see poo museums, and I'm not without any reflection on the quality of this development application. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you councillor Mulder. I'll put the motion, that is for refusal. All those in favour of the motion? That's unanimous, thank you colleagues. I now advise that council concludes its deliberations as a planning authority under the Land Use Planning and Approvals Act of nineteen ninety three, and move on to item four, reports from officers, going down to eight point four governance, eight point four point one, copying refuse disposal site joint authority approval of rules change. I'll call for a mover of the recommendation, please. Deputy mayor, seconded by councillor Chong. Deputy mayor, thank you.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I'm very comfortable, pleased to be able to move this motion in respect to the proposed rule changes for the copying refuse disposal site joint authority, the authority. Quite simply, this is about providing flexibility within the current rules to provide for a possible separation between the roles of the authority secretary and the board secretary. I think this is done well, will provide opportunities for the authority to make some good choices about who they use in what roles, whether it's combined or otherwise, and it provides that flexibility needed, which comes with the right people in the right roles. And I think that, like anything, it'll be a test and see how it works, but I think that the key will be the decision that the authority makes based on what's presented to them by the board, whether they think an employee would be the right person to serve in both roles, whether that doesn't work, and it's a legal contractor. But the key point here is that what we have is a well-run and well-governed organisation. I think this has the capacity to add to the effectiveness of the organisation, done well. So I look forward to seeing how it works in the future, and I seek colleagues' support.
Thank you, deputy mayor. councillor Chong.
Yes, very briefly, just to say that this obviously provides flexibility to separate the roles if necessary, and I think it's a very useful thing for the authority to do, and I seek my colleagues' support.
Thank you councillor Chong. Any other colleagues wishing to make contribution? There's probably not many for I apply.
I seek colleagues' support.
Thank you. I'll put the motion, that is the recommendation. All those in favour. That's unanimous, thank you very much, colleagues. Moving now on to item nine, nine point one, a notice of motion seen in the name of councillor Ritchie. Deputy mayor, review of CAT management legislation. Is there a second? Thank you councillor Goine. Deputy mayor.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. This motion is one of opportunity, it's one that seeks to build on the work that our council is already undertaking in relation to the CAT management consultation that we're currently going through. We note, of course, that the Tasmanian CAT management plan for twenty twenty four to twenty twenty nine is currently in development by the Department of Natural Resources and Environment Tasmania, and this is simply about enlivening a process through Legat that would provide an opportunity to bring the sector together and provide sector-wide input into that process, should the members of Legat see fit to do so. I'm hoping they do, and that would provide further opportunities for the feedback that we continue to gather through our individual council efforts, to have another vehicle for those to be ventilated. I think this is definitely complimentary to what we are already doing, and seek councillors' support for the motion.
Thank you councillor Ritchie. councillor Goine, please.
I would like to thank councillor Ritchie for bringing this one forward. Obviously, you know, it's a space that's near and dear to me, and we've been working hard in several different aspects behind the scenes to get different things in place. And honestly, it surprises me how the right hand can't talk to the left hand, and nobody really knows who is control of anything, and nobody knows the legislation. And so if this can seek further clarity and sector-wide conformity, I can't see any harm, and I really am grateful for coming forward, and hopefully, Legat supports it.
Thank you councillor Goine. Any other colleagues wishing to make a contribution? There have been none, there may not be need for I apply.
No, no, I can't do that, thank you.
Well, I'll put the motion, all those in favour. That's unanimous, thank you colleagues. Moving now on to item nine point two, a notice of motion seen in the name of councillor Goine, review of options for alternatives of chemicals in council's land management. I'll call for a second, please. Thank you, deputy mayor. councillor Goine.
Where do I start? You know, you guys have obviously already been inundated with documents and documents, and obviously, I've spent quite a while down this rabbit hole. First off, I'll start with the explanation that glyphosate isn't actually a chemical. Glycine metal phosphonate is the actual chemical commonly known as glyphosate or Roundup. It was first patented in nineteen sixty-four as a descaler for your kettle, and then they noticed that once mum had cleaned the kettle, she poured it down the sink and it killed off the weeds. So in nineteen sixty-nine, Monsanto painted it now as a herbicide, and currently, you may not be aware, it's actually painted it as a broad-spectrum antibiotic. That is actually because of the way that Roundup works. As you know, it takes a few days for the plant to die off. That's actually because the glycine in the amino acid chain in the plant, so the glyphosate enters into the plant, breaks down the amino acid chain, and then the plant gradually allows a permeation, which actually doesn't kill the plant, it then allows the bacteria in the environment to kill the plant. So the environment is actually what kills the plant, and then it breaks down. So if you think of it, we're kind of a bit like plants. So whilst we might say glyphosate doesn't cause cancer, and it's possibly or probably carcinogenic, what if you think, if we're like a plant, we have the same glycine amino acid chains, and gradually, over the next thirty years, we break down until the environment kills us? So, you know, we can say that this may or may not cause harm, however, it has been decided by IARC, which is the International Cancer Council, that it is probably carcinogenic. So that is one step away from it's going to kill you. But even if we say, okay, it's not going to give us cancer, what we do know is it causes the gut wall to separate, which allows permeation of food proteins into the gut and through into the system, which causes the body to have an autoimmune response. It thinks that there's something attacking it, because the food's leaking, so we call that leaky gut, and then that causes an autoimmune response. So constantly, if you're bombarded by these chemicals, which we are, because it's in most of our food these days, then your body is constantly in an immune response fighting itself. So because we're constantly eating the food, the leaky gut continues, therefore, the autoimmune response. So that's why we see vast increases in autoimmune conditions. It also is linked to issues with mental health, because of the damage it does to your gut microbiota, and at the very least, let's say, it actually stops you from uptaking the vitamins and minerals in the plant, which are vastly decreased by glyphosate products. So at the very least, we're all suffering from vitamin and mineral deficiency, but that's okay. We've got vitamin and mineral supplements to make up for that. So it's, Monsanto, the company that originally patented, actually considers it to be one of their least damaging chemicals. That's because they also brought out DDT, Agent Orange, you name it. So, you know, Roundup's not that bad, according to them. So they have settled eleven billion dollars so far, with thirty thousand lawsuits still pending, which is the second largest after tobacco, which was once considered to be safe and effective. So over six hundred and fifty million litres are used worldwide, it is found in seventy-five per cent of our rainwater, and travels up to seven kilometres because of its water soluble nature. It is found in a hundred per cent of tested samples of breast milk, which means your body filters it, and it's still there when it gets to your baby. So all I'm asking for this motion is that we investigate the alternatives of reduction, and particularly sensitive areas to be addressed, so that we aren't constantly not only eating this chemical, but having it on our hands every time we go to a park, or sitting in it every time, or my dog's walking through it. My vet told me that the increased cases of unknown attacks here in dogs has tripled in the last five years, and she works specifically in this area. So, you know, I seek colleagues' support. I understand that this is a complicated one, but the more we continue investigating this, the more I think you'll find, and I couldn't sleep at night if I didn't at least bring this forward. And I thank councillor Warren for her work with the no spray register, but what's the point in having a no spray register if it travels seven kilometres in air particles? So I seek colleagues' support.
Thank you councillor Goine. deputy mayor, councillor Ritchie.
Thank you, Mr Mayor, and I would like to thank councillor Goine for bringing this motion forward, and for her passion and interest in this subject more generally. I also thank the council officers and staff who have, and in my instance, very short notice, responded to requests for information around this subject. It's been very illuminating. The reason I've seconded this motion is because regardless of the outcome this evening, I actually think it's a conversation that we need to continue to have, and I note, of course, that council is in the process of developing a herbicide use plan. So I think whilst there are lots of, there is lots of debate about this particular chemical, there are lots of other chemicals being used in our city, across our state, our country, internationally, that I think might be worthy for, you know, for seeing how they come up in terms of the plan once it's forthcoming. My preset position, of course, and I think most people would say, if you don't have to use it, then you shouldn't, but to be satisfied as to whether that applies, I think there's, we need to see a lot more work done on that, instance by instance, and so that's going to, you know, that's going to, I hope, form part of what we see forthcoming in the plan. So I'm really pleased that this conversation has been started. I think there's a way to go. I understand that colleagues have different views about the different chemicals and their nature. My husband's an agronomist, we had quite a bit of discussion about this ourselves, he has a different view to me on some issues, and likewise, so I get the complexities of it. I hope that we can at least, you know, continue the discussion, I'm sure we will, and I thank councillor Goine for bringing the motion forward, and I'm happy to support.
Thank you, deputy mayor. Any other colleagues wishing to make a contribution? councillor James, and then councillor Mulder? No, okay, councillor James. I saw you taking in brief. I saw you taking a breath. Councillor James.
Sorry, looking at you. Councillor James. Yeah, look, thank you, Mr Mayor. It is interesting that this has come forward for discussion and I'm conscious of the fact that the Part A of the recommendation authorizes the chief executive officer to develop a scoping document that details possible options for the implementation of non-chemical alternatives for land management and associated funding models for the city of Clarence. We did go through a very extensive process and councillor Warren did provide some background information about the steaming and eradication by that purpose, by that means of the weed management within the city. And we adopted that as part of our process of sort of not necessarily eradicating weed, but reducing their proximity in particular places on the verges and within close proximity to people's property. So look, again, this is a very detailed account and I just at this time find that this is something that really, do we need to spend a lot of time on? Do we need to actually go into the detail and follow through on this? Because there's a lot of scientific information here that tends to, you know, boggle the mind and therefore is it necessary for us to actually embark upon this scoping document that identifies options and costs associated with the phasing out of this, develops options for reducing quantities of herbicides used in line industry best practice, identifies options to investigate and assess future alternatives and new technologies around non-chemical and weed treatments as they come onto the market for safety? So look, that is a huge list of options to be able to go ahead and then authorizes Part C, authorizes the chief executive officer to develop a herbicide use plan which outlines council position and so on and so forth. Look, okay, there are issues, there are matters that need to be investigated, but for me, I just think that let's leave it to those authorities that are investigating it. And surely if they have some new insight or have insight into some of the processes and changes that may be brought in, well, let it be. But rather than that, us spend a lot of time in going into these options and creating a lot of time for the staff, I think it's best left for those in that particular authority or within that scientific investigative area and us to get on with what we do well and run the city to the best of its ability and in the interest of the community.
Thank you councillor James, any other colleagues wishing to make a contribution? Councillor Hunter, thank you.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. First, I would like to thank councillor Goine for bringing this motion forward and for the time and effort she's put into researching and developing the motion. While I understand the intent behind it and the concerns that many have around glyphosate use, after careful consideration, I cannot support it. The motion calls for the development of a scoping document to phase out glyphosate in certain areas and explore non-chemical methods. While I respect the concerns around herbicide use, we've already done significant work in this area. Council's 2021 discussion document provided a thorough review of alternatives to glyphosate, including their effectiveness, cost and safety, and those findings remain valid today. I've spent 15 years working in weed management across New Zealand, Alaska and here in Tasmania in settings ranging from national parks to local government parks and playgrounds. In my experience, glyphosate is a crucial tool for managing invasive weeds, particularly in land conservation and public park management. Proposals like this one can be frustrating for those of us on the ground because we understand the reality of what it takes to effectively control invasive species. In Clarence, we face significant challenges, particularly from invasive weeds. Take for example Chilean needle grass, a weed of national significance, i.e. wands, that is widespread in our municipality. This species is highly aggressive and difficult to control, threatening both our biodiversity and public spaces. Glyphosate remains one of the most effective tools we have to manage this weed. Alternatives such as steam treatments or hand weeding are labour intensive, costly and often impractical. For example, steam can sterilize soil, which is counterproductive when we're trying to restore native vegetation. We've seen other councils try to ban glyphosate and shift to alternative methods, only revert back after realising that these options are not sustainable in terms of cost or effectiveness. Blue Mountains and Parramatta councils are just two examples of this. In fact, the CEO's response and other documents that have been circulated make it clear that councils that trialled alternative methods found themselves spending twice as much on weed control with less effective results. As someone who's worked in this field for many years, I can tell you that removing glyphosate from our toolkit would make weed management incredibly difficult and expensive, especially when dealing with aggressive invaders like Chilean needle grass. Before making any change of this magnitude, I would want to test both the additional cost and the likely increase in weeds with the community as these outcomes would affect all ratepayers, especially given the significant rise in costs that we would expect. The proposed scoping document would be time-consuming and expensive and frankly, we already know from research and trials that the alternatives are not yet viable on a large scale. We must remain open to new technologies, but this motion is essentially asking officers to redo work that's already been done and continues to be done. Our council uses glyphosate responsibly, adhering to the Australian Pesticides and Veterinarian Medicines Authority guidelines, are KIM cert trained and we have robust safety measures in place to protect our staff and the public. The recent federal court ruling further confirmed that there's no proven link between glyphosate use and non-Hodgkin lymphoma, which has been a key concern for many. Furthermore, council is already in the process of developing a herbicide use plan. I trust the process currently underway, which is exploring the best ways to ensure safety while managing weeds effectively. For that reason, I support the CEO's position and believe we should allow this work to continue without duplicating our efforts. As someone with direct hands-on experience in this space, I urge my fellow councillors to trust the professionals on the ground who understand the realities of weed management. This motion will divert valuable resources away from other important projects and for that reason, I will not be supporting the motion. I simply ask my colleagues to take these points that I've raised into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Hunter. Councillor Chong, thank you, then councillor Kennedy, then councillor Warren.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Can I first thank councillor Goine for the work that she's done in putting this together? But can I also recognise the work that the staff are doing and continue to do in this area? As councillor Hunter has said, there is a lot of work going on in this space already and our staff are highly trained and very competent in using this. So as an ex-commercial orchidist, we trialled quite a lot of these non-herbicide ways of reducing weeds. Obviously, in a commercial orchid, weeds are a big issue, you know, and the costs of chemicals are high and we can find different ways to do it. That's a really great thing to do. Generally speaking, I found most of the other methods were more expensive, less effective and in the case of steam, actually counterproductive. Because as councillor Hunter mentioned, it actually sterilizes the soil. So you're removing all the good things in the soil as well as potentially killing the weeds. So in fact, can be more, can be more counterproductive than actually useful. So I guess I find myself in a position where while I do empathise with the intent behind this motion, I can't support it. I think we need to leave the work that the staff are doing to get to a conclusion, to look at the herbicide use plan when it comes out and have a think about whether it incorporates the kind of questions that are coming up here, but not put something on the table when there's work already being done.
Thank you councillor Chong, councillor Kennedy.
Thank you, Mayor. I will be supporting this motion and I understand the positions around the chamber at this point in time. I understand all the evidence and there is a lot of work that's been done in this space. I feel maybe if the motion is not successful tonight, can we look at how we can bring it back and keep active in this space? I really appreciate councillor Goine bringing this forward and reminding me of the fact that I had two brothers that were farmers that both passed away far too young. And the only comment that was ever made, probably Roundup. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Kennedy, councillor Warren, please.
Thank you, Mr Mayor, and I guess my main point is, it's like the Hippocrates goes, do no harm. And there's enough evidence to suggest that this may be a problem, which means that in years to come, council may be liable because there are certainly places around the world where this has been banned. So yes, research continues. It concerns me that the main argument against, oh, sorry, one of the main arguments, and I thank councillors Chong and Hunter for their first-hand knowledge of this area. But it comes back to cost, you know, and again, it's not necessarily what we should be doing. I think councillor James said, you know, we need to be looking after the citizens of Clarence. And to me, that includes their wellbeing and their health. And if we know that there's a possibility that this may be carcinogenic and more information is becoming available, then it's certainly, we need to take a precautionary approach to this. Look, I have a science degree, including two years of chemistry. I think there are some statements in councillor Goine's opening remarks that probably bear closer scrutiny and I would guard against confusing correlation with causation. But on the information that we have available, and there is a lot of it and I do commend the officers for their work and the concern that they've put into this. I think, you know, things like non-chemical alternatives, not all chemicals are bad, you know. It's non-carcinogenic, but again, we don't know that, we have no outright proof. We have concerns. So I'm basically supportive of this in that we continue to work in this direction while still acknowledging the fact that the officers are doing good work in this area.
Thank you councillor Warren, councillor Hume.
Thank you, Mayor. Look, I've been listening very carefully to the debate. I would have hoped that I'd had an opportunity to research this issue a bit more thoroughly than I have coming to this meeting. But I commend the work of councillor Goine, the amount of effort she's put into researching this. But also councillor Hunter, you know, has, from her contribution, it seems, put substantial effort in. And I guess I have a bit of difficulty. As a general rule, I guess, I take the view that doing a report won't hurt. But I guess it depends on the cost of that report and what the, you know, whether the outcomes are worth the investment that's put into it. And I understand that there are still some, it seems uncertainties about the safety of glyphosate, there's still some scientific debate about it. But I also trust that the APVMA is a body that, you know, has experts that look very closely at the evidence. And they are saying that, you know, based on the evidence they see so far, there is, you know, not considered to be a significant risk from its use, if it's used properly. I think it's also worth noting that should we pass this motion and, mind you, this motion doesn't immediately lead to a phase out, it's a report that goes to a workshop, that, you know, we would then look at those options for reduction or phase out. But having said that, should we proceed with a reduction or phase out? It doesn't stop, and councillor Goine observed that, you know, this thing travels large distances, it doesn't stop the use on private land. And if there is a risk, then, you know, what council does isn't necessarily going to remove that risk from the environment given the potential for use on private land. I think that's an important point to note. I think on the balance of what I've listened to on the debate and I was genuinely undecided coming into this, that I'm going to vote against the motion for the reasons that councillors Hunter and Chong have put forward. But I would like to ask, you know, for the information of councillors, what would be the anticipated cost of, should the motion pass, preparing this report? And would it be done in-house or through consultants?
Acting senior.
Thank you, Mayor. I would imagine it could be done in-house, there may need to be some referral outside, but I would make the assumption it could be done in-house as we have done previously in this area.
Thank you, acting senior, councillor Hume.
Do you have any guesses what the cost of the exercise might be?
Thank you. We have a figure on that, I may defer to Mr Gray to see whether he could provide further comment. But it'd be quite difficult to put a figure on it.
Mr Gray.
Through, Mr Mayor, I guess the, any extra cost will be advice that our in-house team don't have, that we need to investigate or further evidence to provide counsel. It's more in a case of doing this exercise. We'll resource allocate staff that currently are under council's instructions and decisions to follow that will have to be taken off some of those items or I'll have to advise the CEO, acting CEO, what effect this will have on work or decisions in terms of what's to be prioritised, yeah.
Thank you, Mr Gray. Councillor Hume.
I mean, noting the comments that have been made about, you know, the work that staff are already putting into this and the APVMA's view on safety. I don't believe this exercise is worth the investment, but having said that, I still commend councillor Goine for bringing the motion forward and the effort that she's put into it. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Hume, councillor Mulder.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. The fact is, with all the lawsuits and with all the stuff going on, that when you put it before a judge rather than a sympathetic jury, you get findings like the one to which councillor Goine referred. And that is, one thing is plain, the science is not all one way. This is the judge. Said none of the, said none of the scientific studies presented at the trial leading to conclude that was clear and compelling evidence that glyphosate caused cancer in mammals. Now, we can all say, yes, there's no clear and compelling evidence, but it's a bit hard to disprove a negative. So in other words, unless there's clear and compelling evidence, it shouldn't be, you know, it shouldn't be done. Now, that doesn't mean that down the track sometime, we're not going to get something. And from my brief look at this, the majority of those lawsuits are settled by people who are basically soaked in the stuff. They use it every day for extensive periods of time and they haven't been wearing, you know, safety and precautions. And a lot of this stuff now is, we can talk to the staff and you see them getting around there if they're ever there using it, they look like they're walking on the moon in a sealed, in a biosuits and those sorts of things. And that's how you deal with these things. It's, it's not like one drop is going to kill you. It's certainly not like ad hoc exposure like most of us get when we get taken care of the capeweed that infests our lawn because we haven't looked after the soil properly and would make it worse by steaming it. And people say, and you hear these references to things like Agent Orange, well, there was no compelling link there, but there was a high degree of correlation that eventually was proven once, you know, the DNA chemistry stood up. And it was quite obvious that this was, this was something that should have not have been used and should not have been banned because very early on its use, there's this high correlation between minimal exposures and birth defects in the children. So clearly it's operating on the DNA. So correlation doesn't prove cause. And I would actually refer and I would... And I would actually refer, and I was quite heartened to hear councillor Hunter's contribution. An expert, or experienced at least in this particular field. And the fact that is, a lot of this work that we're now talking is going on at a national, at an international and at a council level. Why would we now go and add another layer to it? Why would we go on there? And you talk about high dosages. We've all read the study of lab rats that if you feed, you know, a 200 gram rat, you know, four kilograms of sugar over the space of a week, guess what? It gets cancer. And if you talk about sugar, the rise in most modern diseases is in direct correlation with sugar consumption in Western societies. Diabetes, heart failures, some, a lot of cancers and things like that. And, you know, and, and I feel for people who, who have lost loved ones through what is possibly glyphosate. But I can tell you now that when our daughter got leukaemia at the age of two and a half, she got leukaemia. In that same hospital ward were kids whose parents had grown up right out of Marawa. What are the statistical probabilities of the kids of three people who grew up in a tiny little acreage like Marawa having kids with leukaemia in the hospital at the same time? Maybe it was some of the agricultural chemicals, maybe it was the DDT, which we were virtually dusting our dogs with daily to keep the fleas off them, right? Maybe they were the triggers, maybe they weren't, but all said and done. So, but in the end, it turned out to be a statistical aberration. Three years later, you go in there and there's no one from a rural community. They're all city-based people. And we hear the stories about the, the situation down at the old field, Wentworth Park. You know, we have a certain resident who has been a bit quiet lately, but was constantly on about cancer cluster, cancer cluster because of the tip and the waste. And although some people there, there's no statistical evidence to show it was a cluster over time. And therefore, you know, we don't have to dig the whole thing up and do it. Look, in the end, there'll be a replacement for glyphosate, I'm sure. At the moment, it's about the best tool we've got and it's far better from us to continue on with doing another study over another study over the great amount of work the staff have done. Not least of which, I might say, is in the last week in asking for additional information on the matter before the case. I was just waiting for the negative.
Right, councillor Goine, one more.
Well, you've got to take a chance, that's right.
Thanks, colleagues, and I'm actually grateful if you don't support this motion, so I'm going to throw that out there. I'm going to say that when I first considered bringing this to the table about three months ago, I started working this space. And being a political wet skin and actually not ever really writing a motion without lovely people around the table to hold my hand, with no training provided, apart from a career in hairdressing and a tinfoil hat, which I proudly wear. I came to the CEO with my idea of a motion. And I also mentioned other ways of possibly rewriting this motion to be more in line with his views, and it was a bit of a hard no. So this was made up in space by Emma the Hairdresser. So it may not be worded correctly. I will say that three weeks ago, I circulated this motion and it would have been nice to have these conversations. Radio silence except from a nice email from councillor Warren. I would happily have rewritten, reworded. What I actually was seeking to do with this is basically to stop, as, as councillor Mulder said, drowning in the stuff. You might think we're not drowning in the stuff, but that's because you can't see it. It's in your food, it's in everything, it's on the grass, it's in the playgrounds, it's in the air, you know. So I would guarantee that every one of us around this table, if you had a test taken, you would show traces in your system. It's not saying it's going to kill you, it's not saying there's a direct correlation, but we are literally soaking in this stuff. And the reason I brought this to the table is, you know, it's great to have the conversation, but it was more about reducing the amount of glyphosate we use. There is cases we will always need glyphosate. There are invasive weed species. However, I'd like you to look out there and go, well, what's a weed? Plenty of things we consider to be weeds, like dandelions, have medicinal benefits, stinging nettles. I have a nettle tea most mornings. It's got great, great, you know, benefits. So when you look out there and you see the weeds are actually the nature's way of healing the soil, when we're proactively spraying our, our areas just to stop a dandelion from growing, that's what I was trying to target with this motion. You know, all around the world, farmers are using regenerative practices to heal the soil. Yes, steam kills the soil, so does glyphosate. Kills the soil microbiome. It might not do it immediately, but if you see, if you watch the documentaries I sent through, there's more than enough evidence. There would also be more than enough evidence to show you the reasons why the studies don't directly show it. And whilst we may trust people like the APVMA, they haven't actually reviewed the product in 20 years in use in Australia. So they're saying it's safe. 20 years of data says it's not safe since then, but it's still safe and effective. So I'm, I'm more than grateful for those of you that don't support this motion. I'm glad to have brought it to the table.
Thank you.
I see colleagues not support.
Thank you, councillor Goine.
Does that mean I can keep talking?
All right, I think that's, thank you for that. I'll put the, put the motion as moved by councillor Goine. All those in favour? Those against? And that's, that's lost. Moving now onto item 10, councillor's question time. There are no questions or notices. 10.3, answers to questions without notice, previous council meeting as listed in the agenda. 10.4, questions without notice. Any questions on the floor, starting this evening with the deputy mayor, councillor Ritchie? Thank you, councillor Mulder.
As councillor Kennedy would be aware, at direct request, insistence of a ratepayer, can I be advised as to, is it time yet for him to remove his sandbags at Beet Street in Bella Reve? In other words, has the piping been completed at Beet Street or, or when do we expect that to be done?
Mr. Graham, thank you.
Through, Mr. Mayor, I'll take that one, notice and inform council through the next weekly briefing report. Well, I, I, I've been on leave, so I don't know whether the temporary stormwater works. The pipe hasn't gone in. We're going to do some temporary, temporary stormwater out for. I understand the pipes are connected, are working at the moment, but we need to be informed on the, the temporary out for, that that all is, is complete, and I'll inform council.
Thank you, Mr. Graham. Councillor Mulder. Thank you. Councillor Hunter? Councillor Hume.
Thank you, Mayor. We received a briefing on the 2024/25 Tasmanian state budget and commitments in Clarence. And one of the dot points in there is nine community sports commitments, which for the life of me, and maybe I'm just not Googling properly, I can't actually seem to find what those projects are. Do we have any knowledge of what's been committed to by the Tasmanian government to sports facilities?
Miss, Acting Celia.
That one on notice and provide an update.
Anything else, councillor Hume? Thank you. Councillor James.
My first question is in relation to the council-owned building, which is the squash centre in Cambridge Road, Bella Reve. Has council undertaken at its expense any repairs to the building in the last, oh, since the beginning of the financial year, 1 July 2024, to present date, please?
Thank you, councillor James. Acting Celia.
Thank you. To my knowledge, we haven't in that short space of time, but I'll investigate and provide an update.
Thank you, Acting Celia. Councillor James.
The second question is in relation to the Town Street Ferry Terminal versus the Linus Farm Ferry Terminal. Have we received any correspondence or advice from the the agency responsible for advising council that either one or the other will be the preferred site for the ferry firm, the ferry terminal?
Thank you, councillor James. Acting Celia.
Thank you. No, we haven't received any updates.
Thanks.
Councillor Goine.
Following on from my now-lost motion, a part of that was I would have liked to seek consultation with Graham Sate, who's a world leader in reduction of glyphosate. He charges $200 for a consultation. Do you think this might possibly in the council's budget to do a consultation with him on the matter?
Acting Celia.
Thank you. I think that'd be within budget.
I believe that during the works for the new toilet block at the Opossum Bay Park, the playground has been removed or at least largely removed. Was this expected and when will we see it repaired and or replaced?
Thank you, councillor Goine. Mr. Graham, please.
Through, Mr. Mayor, I'll take that one, notice and inform council through a weekly briefing report.
Thank you. Councillor Warren? Councillor Chong?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a question if I could have an update to my question last time about the playground in Richmond.
Mr. Graham.
Timing thereof.
Sorry, I have no update. Sorry, I'm that one. I'll investigate and advise.
Weekly briefing report then, please. Thank you. Councillor Kennedy.
Thank you, Mayor. This one is not new, but can I get an update on what we're planning to do in the foreseeable future, well, soon, at Pipe Clay Esplanade because after visiting the last couple of days opposite number 35, it looks like the road is now actually falling into the lagoons. So I'd just like to get an update on what's going to happen there and when.
Thank you. Mr. Graham.
Back to the mayor, same response. I'll investigate and I'll...
Councillor Kennedy.
Circulate some photos as well to Mr. Graham.
Yes, please. That'd be greatly appreciated. Thank you. Well, moving now into item number 11, closed meeting. I call for a motion to move into closed meeting. Councillor Chong, second to councillor Goine, thank you. I'll put the motion. All those in favour? It's unanimous. Thank you. Well, thank you to those members of the public that tuned in tonight via the live stream. Please join us again, same time, same place in three weeks' time. Please end the live stream. Wonderful. Well, colleagues, now we move on to item 11.1, applications for...